All right, this meeting is being recorded per Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B. And good evening and welcome to the June 2020 Meeting of the Weathersfield Zoning Board of Appeals. I do not have in front of me a direct copy of the agenda, so if anyone has that and wants to flag me if I get off track, certainly let me know. Julie, I know, has one in front of her. But we have one application this evening, and so our order will go, we'll do the public hearing on the application, which is where we take testimony, ask questions of the applicant, then we move to public meeting, which is our commissioner discussion and motion and voting. As we mentioned a bit in the beginning, there are five commissioners who will vote tonight. You need four affirmative votes for the various to be granted. And after we've concluded the public meeting, we'll move to other items on the agenda, and I may get this slightly out of order, but I know we have approval of minutes from the May meeting. We have an opportunity for any comment on ZBA business that's not otherwise on the agenda. And then we are hoping to, we're hoping to formalize officers, but we are missing a couple of folks again, so we'll chat about that when we get to it. With that, if I could ask Julie to please read the first, the application for the public hearing?
Sure. Application number 6233-20, variance from Section 7.2 Yard Exception for Fences to Allow Six-Foot-High Solid Privacy Fence Running From the Rear of the Property for Ninety Feet Along the Street Line, Property Boundary at Jameswell Road, as Against Four Feet High, Residential Zone A, Location 270 Dale Road, Applicant Cody Bergoff.
All right, and Charles, did you have a staff report that you wanted to read in on this one?
Yes, absolutely, I do. So the request is for a variance from Section 7.2 Yard Exception for Fences, and it's to allow six feet high solid privacy fence running for ninety feet from the rear of the property along the street line of Jameswell Road, as opposed to that four foot height that's required by the regulations. So just to give you a background, Mr. Chairman, a call was received by the zoning enforcement officer on May 6, 2020, and the caller stated that the fence was being constructed at the corner of Dale and Jameswell Road, and appeared to be against the zoning regulations. So I inspected on May 7, and my inspection revealed that a six-foot-high vinyl privacy fence had been constructed seemingly on the street line. The fence also appears to stop short of the forty-foot required front yard setback from Dale Road, which is the front of the property. So the mentions of the property are as follows: the frontage, that's along Dale Road, that property line along Dale Road, that's thirty-eight point two-seven feet. The rear property line is the same, I'm sorry, that should be eighty-three point two-seven. The rear property line is the same, eighty-three point two-seven feet, and both Jameswell Road street line and the eastern property line is one forty-five point seven-seven feet. I pulled the plot plan from the street file in the office and saw that the front yard setback line is forty feet, which is usually the case in most of the time. And then the side yard is fifteen feet, that's the building line we're talking about. So although Section 3.7 of the zoning regulations, the dimensional requirements prescribe a minimum side yard and an aggregate side yard setback for all properties, a property on a corner lot basically has two frontages. However, the frontage with the shortest length is deemed to be the front yard, and usually depicts a forty-foot setback, while the side yard would have either fifteen foot or twenty foot building line setback. In this case, 270 Dale Road has a fifteen-foot side yard setback. So although the side yard setback for Zone A states a minimum of ten feet and an aggregate of twenty-three feet, the plot plan has demarcated a fifteen-foot setback at Jameswell Road. So in effect, that's where the six-foot-high fence should have been, fifteen foot in from where it currently sits. Background for the zoning regulations, the zoning regulations say that a freestanding fence or other structure may be erected above ground between the street line and building line, provided that, one, it shall not exceed four feet in height, and, two, the fence, when viewed at right angles, not obstruct visibility by more than fifty percent; three, no component other than those required for support shall be greater than six inches in width or diameter; and, four, each component shall be distributed so as to, A, be separated by a dimension at least equal to its own width, and B, provide uniformity of design and visibility throughout the length and height of the fence, wall, or structure. So what's it saying, Mr. Chairman, is that for a picket fence, the boards have to be the same width. So if you're using four-foot wide board for the picket fence, then each space has to be four foot. So that's what it means when it says that it has to be equal spacing. So I then had to write a notice of violation to the property owner, and I sent the notice of violation out, asking the property owner to modify the fence to conform to the four feet height. And this, this time, the property owner inquired about keeping the fence as is, because the fence was up already, looking all nice and ready. He didn't want to take it down. He inquired if there was some other option, so of course, I advised him that the only option was to file for a variance. So however, on May 18, I received an email from Mr. Bergoff saying that the town engineer had come to the property, and that he said that he did not see a visibility problem at the intersection. I spoke with the town engineer, who confirmed that this was so. So in concluding, Mr. Chairman, the applicant has now applied for a variance, which is before the board, and that's to allow the six-foot-high solid privacy fence to remain on the street line, and in so doing, it will leave a fifty-five point seven-nine feet to the prop. So where that six-foot-high fence stops, from there to the front property line is fifty-five point seven-nine feet, and the regulations call for forty feet setback from Dale Road, which is the front of the property. I have no concerns really regarding visibility, and like I said before, the town engineer has no concerns regarding visibility at the intersection from the six-foot-high fence. And if there was an issue with visibility at the intersection, it would have to be that the four-foot-high fence for that, for us forty feet, and along Dale Road, would have to be at least four feet high, and with the picket fence that I mentioned, either two. So if this variance was granted, I don't see a negative impact on the safety, you know, at the intersection or aesthetics of the neighborhood, in my view. And I have attached the zoning regulations, Section 7.2, which I have on the screen, and I can pull that up if so required, and that's basically my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we hear from the applicant? Mr. Bergoff, if you just want to, if you would, just give your name and address for the record.
Yep, Cody Bergoff, 270 Dale Road.
Great, and now we can start with what you'd like to tell us, what you'd like us to know about the application, and we may ask you some questions as we go through as well.
Sure, sure. So the installation for the fence started on May the 4th. Prior to that, I had contacted Call Before You Dig. They're supposed to get in touch with all the utility companies and as well as the town, so notifications were sent according to them. They had told me that I need to set up the line of the fence where it's going to go with white stakes and a string line, which I had done, and that was up for two weeks. I hadn't heard anything from the town, so I had called the building department, and at that point, the town buildings were closed due to COVID. So I did end up getting in touch with, I believe it was the secretary, who said that all the zoning regulations are on the, on the internet. So I printed off the entire booklet of the zoning regulations, and I looked at those, and it was to my interpretation that I was in compliance. As Charles had stated, for the front yard, there's a forty-foot setback, and I was looking at some of the definitions, and a little bit deceiving on some of them, because it was, again, my interpretation that that only applied to the front yard. So I did look at 7.2, which is Yard Exception for Fences, which Charles did read. Now, there's two subsections in that. One, or I'm sorry, A is Open Fence, which Charles had read, which is in regards to the four-foot fence and the fifty percent opaque. There is also a subsection B, which is for solid fences, and I'm not sure if you guys have a, maybe if you guys have a copy of the zoning regulations with you, but it states a retaining wall, freestanding wall, fence, or other structure not complying with the above provisions may be exempt from the front yard requirement for the zone in which it is located, if approved by the zoning enforcement official and the town engineer. So when I saw that, I had gotten in contact with someone from the engineer's office so that they could come out and take a look, which they did, and they said they didn't have an issue with where the fence was. There was no sightline issues or safety issues at the intersection at Dale and Jameswell. Once I got this information, I had a, or I asked for a meeting with Mr. Morrison, and I believe it's Mr. Sola. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be in the meeting, so I did have a Zoom meeting with Mr. Morrison and Mr. Gillespie, if I'm saying that correctly, and that was on May the 21st. And in that meeting, we discussed the situation. Mr. Morrison did say that he received correspondence from, Mr. Sola stating that he didn't have an issue with the fence, there was no sightline issues. So I had asked Mr. Morrison if, as the fence stood now, would he approve it? And he said yes, he didn't see any issues with where it was, there was no safety issues. So I guess my question and concern is, because there's two sections, I know I did file for a variance on 7.2, there is 7.2B, which is specifically in the zoning regulations for solid fences, and I guess my concern is it does state that if it's approved by the zoning enforcement official and the town engineer, then you may be able to be exempt from it. So that's why, that's why I wanted to go for the variance and see where it got me.
Okay. Question for Charles, the, I want to make sure my interpretation of seven, of the subsection B is correct, that he referenced. If the structure were four feet high but not opaque, and there were no issues, that's where you and/or the town would have approval without having to seek a variance, right? It's the height and the, it's the six feet of privacy fence that's the issue in terms of where it's being placed, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. I'd also, I'd also like to point out that, just by way of correction, that Mr. Derek Sola is the IT professional that works in the office, and he has nothing at all to do with visibility at intersection and everything.
Okay, I might have the wrong person, then, I'm sorry.
You could have been referring to Derek Gregor, who was the town engineer.
Yeah, I was, I was just told the name Derek, so I wasn't sure of the last name.
And so it's not Sola.
Yeah, okay, yeah, Gregor then, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Town engineer. So yes, that section that Mr. Bergoff mentioned a while ago is, that's relating to if there was an issue with the, at the intersection, and there wasn't a, for instance, it mentioned, it mentioned like a retaining wall, like you had a solid wall, and you, you did not have that fifty percent opaque. And myself and the engineer, take a look at it, we could say, well, based on the fact that there's no visibility, that we, if we don't see a visibility, we could say, okay, that's fine, as far as that goes. But that only, that only relates to the, to the front of the property and not like the side yard, because there's no issue with visibility at the side yard. For that ninety feet, there's pretty much no visibility there. The only visibility is affected there is, is your backyard.
Right, I guess my confusion is because you had stated that there's two frontages, that the back or the side yard would be considered a frontage then?
No, I said, I said two frontages, because when I say two frontages, it means that they're allotted on two streets, so to speak, but the frontage, the front of the property is really that with the shortest width. So, but, but the regulations attempt to make the corner lots have, have that kind of a setback, that kind of a setback, and that fifty percent opaque for visibility at the intersection. So if you were to measure forty feet from that corner where Jameswell Road meets Dale Road, and measure back to the rear of the property for forty feet that way, we wouldn't want to see a six-foot-high fence, because that's where the visibility issue would come in.
Right, absolutely.
That has to be forty, four feet high and fifty percent opaque. But in the case, as the regulation specifies, in the case of a retaining wall or any other kind of freestanding fence that might be constructed, or attempted to be constructed without the fifty percent opaque, myself and the engineer could say, well, we see no visibility issue there, and we could let that go. But suffice it to say, we could not look at the six-foot fence on the side street line and say, well, there's no visibility, so let it go. The proper challenge to do that, and Board of Appeals is, has the responsibility of hearing variances, applications from, and making their decision based on what obviously fit.
Okay, so we're in the right place, that's good. Why don't we open it up, and I'm just going to kind of go in the order of how I can see commissioners on the screen and do a call to see if anybody has any questions. Rita, you're first up on mine, do you have any questions?
Dave, I have a question first. Are we, do we have questions now of Mr. Bergoff, or do you have other, other people's statements first, no, questions first?
No, we should do questions first, yeah.
Okay, so I have, I do have a question.
Excuse me, I, I know that you've heard from the applicant, you're not going to ask for anyone that wants to speak for, or?
Oh, do I, we can go ahead, or I was just going to...
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
I was going to go to discussion first, but we can go the other way if you like.
That's fine, no, 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 that's fine.
Okay.
That's what I thought, I wasn't sure. There is a guide, application guidance for installing fences that the town has, and I think it, it says pretty clearly that between the street line and the building line, it can't be more than four feet. I mean, it doesn't say, doesn't say, doesn't say front or side, it's between, it's the street line. So one of my concerns was, because your property abuts a home which their front door faces Jameswell, your back fence is actually really coming into their front, front yard, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, so the, the property owner who, that I had bought there, he actually paid for half of that part, because he wanted the fence there as well, so we split the cost of that.
So he wants the fence out to the street line?
Correct, yes.
I don't think the town necessarily wants that kind of structure, though, according to the zoning regulation. Okay.
Okay.
And so did you check the app, did you check that guide to fences?
I did, and that's, that's where I, I guess I misunderstood.
Before you put it up, before you install the fence?
I know, I should have had a better understanding before that. I guess I must have read a little too deeply into the definitions and the regulations, because it kind of painted a different picture in my head. I thought it was only for front yards. I wouldn't have thought for my backyard that would have been.
Yeah, I think it's because the backyard really is someone else's front yard. Okay, for now.
Okay. Dan, you're next up on my screen, any questions? You're on mute, Dan.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
How far is it from the street? Is it one foot?
Seven feet.
So from Jamison Road onto your property, it's seven foot, seven feet in?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
All right, Kevin, you're next up, any questions?
Not, not for the applicant, I got questions for Charles.
Okay. Paul, are you, looks like you were having a couple of connection issues, are you back with us? Paul, can you hear us? All right, we'll move on, so that's the four of us. All right, I guess Kevin, why don't you go ahead with your, well, actually, let's, let's come back if you got a question just for Charles, let's come back, so let's offer opportunity, if we have anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this variance.
Mr. Chairman, I received two emails, like, one was received like two minutes before six, and one nine minutes before six this afternoon, and I'll start from, I'll start by reading the first one, which I haven't even opened yet, and that's from Javier B. And it says, and I quote, "As a resident of Weathersfield and a neighbor of Mr. Bergoff at 270 Dale Road, I admire the newly constructed fence. I believe the fence is aesthetically pleasing while also providing privacy to Mr. Bergoff, as well as his neighbors. I support the application for a variance for Mr. Bergoff, and I believe his fence is tasteful and useful, and is well, it's a welcome addition to the neighborhood. I do not see any issues to his fence, and I believe that this fence does not impede the view of motorists on Dale Road or on Jameswell Road in any way. I respectfully believe the Weathersfield Zoning Board should not have any issue with granting this variance to Mr. Bergoff, as I believe it only adds to the aesthetics and the property value of his home, as well as the home's surrounding." This came from Javier Bello of 231 Clearfield Road.
Okay, Charles, it looks like we may have Mr. Bello on the line. Do we want to take a moment to ask if he wants to add to that comment, or do you want to finish reading in what you have?
Um, you can take him, Mr. Chairman.
All right, did I see correctly that we have Mr. Bello on? I think if you're on, you may still be on mute. Okay, I thought we had somebody joining. All right, Charles, why don't you go on to the next one? And then I do see we have a couple of hands raised, we'll get to you.
Next letter is from Joseph Lucas, and Joseph Lucas writes as follows, and I quote, "My name is Joseph Lucas, I live at 138 Jameswell Road in Weathersfield, my phone number is I write today regarding application number 6233-20, applicant Cody Bergoff. For clarification purposes, Mr. Bergoff's back property line abuts the side of my property on Jameswell. When I'm not fighting crime by night, just ask my other neighbors. I am an employee at a local architectural firm, where my duties, among other things, include plan review for frontage and advising clients and municipalities on sightlines for large capital improvement projects throughout our great state. While not retained on behalf of Mr. Bergoff, my professional career has taught me a little about some of the concerns that I believe this variance has, was implemented to help and prevent. To be clear, I fully support this application and strongly suggest the committee does so as well. Regarding a concern of safety or sightlines, I travel south on Jameswell at least five days a week. Mr. Bergoff's fence is far enough past his dwelling that his house is more of an obstruction blocking any uncommon traffic long before his fence could or ever would. When returning to my home, because his fence is setback beyond the corner of his dwelling, his vehicle is more of an obstruction than any size fence could or would ever be. Someone traveling at a normal rate of speed when approaching Jameswell from the west or east on Dale would safely be able to navigate the turn with ample time to respond as necessary to anything traveling south on Jameswell should the need arise. On a personal note, I have found that Mr. Bergoff is a simple man and a local volunteer, first responder in our town. He just wants a little bit of privacy when he returns home, and some space for his new pup to run free. As his neighbor, I fully support his application and hope the committee will support it as well. Thank you very much, Joseph Lucas, 138 Jameswell Road, 860-918-5681."
All right, and Mr. Lucas has a hand raised in the meeting room, would you like to add any comments, sir?
Yes, thank you. The only thing I'd like to add to Mrs. Owen's comment about the fence being all the way up to the front of the street on Jameswell, for those of you that might not know, where we live is sandwiched between Walkin Hill Road and Ridge Road towards the crest at Ridge Road. When I stand in my backyard, I can see into the backyards and windows of eight of the houses around me. This fence, as it's currently installed, blends in nicely, so at the front of my house, the bushes that I have running along the street, it provides some resemblance of privacy. So as a neighbor, I support, and as I think Cody said before, we even paid for half of the fence, just so that we could have some bit of privacy. When you live on this part, or in this part of Weathersfield, it's very easy for neighbors to, to be able to see into other people's properties, and the fence at least gives myself and my family some resemblance of privacy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Charles, did you have anything else to read in, in terms of comments you've received?
No, those are the only two things that I've received, and they're both speaking for Mr. Bergoff.
Okay, and I see, forgive me if I mispronounced the last name, Ms. Barasa, did you wish to speak?
Hi, sorry, yep, Robin Barasa, 248 Dale Road.
Go ahead, please.
I live approximately three houses down from Mr. Bergoff's house, and I just am speaking on behalf of my family and saying that we are fine with the fence, we support it. Visually, it's, it looks very nice. When someone new or young moves into the neighborhood, you're pretty excited, and Mr. Bergoff has appeared to be working on his house every day, making it look nice, he seems to be very vested in our neighborhood. I know he does have a new little puppy, and probably wants to allow it to run around a little bit in addition to have some privacy, and we're just excited when people come in and, you know, work hard and spend a lot of time... And we're just excited when people come in and, you know, work hard and spend a lot of time and maybe some money to make their properties a little better and nicer. And just want to say we support it. We don't think it looks bad. It looks well-made, well-put in, and we're okay with it. So that's all I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you very much. I see we do have a couple of other callers joining the meeting, so I just want to flag one more time if anybody wants to unmute, if anybody else wishes to speak on this application, who hasn't had a chance to speak yet. All right, going once. Okay, I want to turn it back just to make sure we have ample opportunity. Back to any of the commissioners, and I know, Paul, you were out for a little bit. Are you back and able to hear us?
I am back. I'm ready now.
Okay. Did you have any questions, Paul? I'm sorry.
I think I'm good on questions right now.
Okay, all right. Any other commissioners, if you want to unmute, if you had any other questions? Okay, Mr. Bergoff, anything you want to add before we close out the hearing?
Nope, no, I think I stated everything I needed to. Thank you.
Okay, all right. With that, then can we have a motion for one of the commissioners to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. We'll move into our public meeting. Julie, if I could ask you one more time to read the application?
Application number 6233-20, variance from section 2.2, yard exception for fences to allow six-foot-high solid privacy fence running from the rear of the property for 90 feet along the street line, property boundary, at Jameswell Road, as against four-feet-high residential zone A, section 270 Dale Road, applicant Cody Bergoff.
All right, thank you. And so as we start discussion, there are just a handful of points that I think are somewhat pertinent. So one is to remember that as we discuss and as we vote, the fact that the structure is at least partially constructed is not really something we can take into account. We have to approve the variance on its merits. The other piece I would add is, you know, we've had an application very similar to this in our recent history. To that same point, each application we receive, we hear on its own merits, and we're not... And then I'll just, a quick piece of my perspective. I just, I find this to be challenging for corner lots and understand the needs and concerns around the visibility and safety, particularly at the intersection. But if those things are not at, or of concern, particularly to the representatives of the town who have evaluated that, I just am challenged by the, in fact, that if there were another house on the other side, you know, that fence could go up. And so I'll just clarify again that, you know, the reason we're hearing this as an application is because one of two things could have happened and not required us to be here. One is the fence could have been on the building line, I'm sorry, on the property line, and have met the four-feet-high, 50% opaque requirements that Charles was reading. Or the six-foot privacy fence would be okay, but set back all the way 15 feet in. So since we're outside of those two possibilities, we're hearing the application. And with that, I'll quiet myself for a moment and let any of the other commissioners weigh in with discussion.
Should make a motion, I think, first, right?
Yeah, and that was my error a couple of meetings ago. We actually don't have to do that. We can have our discussion in absence of a motion. So yeah, thank you for flagging that, though.
Well, I can go, I guess. So, Charles, I guess I'm still a little confused about the section B of that, of that about the six-foot-high section, because I brought this up on a previous application. So, I mean, again, I mean, both, both sides are really being considered as fronts. But you're saying if he's, it needs to be 40 feet back from the smallest dimensional side, correct?
Yes, yes. And Commissioner Tedesco, what we do in the zoning office, we look at the street fires, and the street fires has demarcated the, for every street fire, they have demarcated the property line, building lines, right? Building line is usually 40 feet from the front of the property. And for the side, it ranges from, either, not ranges from, it's either 15 feet or 20 feet. So in this case, Mr. Bergoff's property 270 Dale Road requires a 15-feet building line set back from the side yard. And remember now, it's still regarded as the side yard.
Okay.
Sorry, Kevin, just to add to that, so the, I'll say the difference we have with a corner lot versus an internal lot. So if this were his backyard in an internal lot, he could put a six-foot-high privacy fence right on the property line, correct, Charles?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Yes.
And we heard that this one, while not set back to the building line, is going to be seven feet in from the street, I believe, is what we heard.
That's correct, seven feet.
All right, any other comments, questions from commissioners? Rita, go ahead.
I guess my concern is still the fact that, yes, it's a corner lot, but the house next to it is not a corner lot. And maybe in this case, the neighbor doesn't care and actually wants it and even asks, you know, offered to pay for half of it. But there are many corner lots in this town where I don't think that's going to be the case. And I know we look at each application separately, but I also think the zoning laws are there, and there has to be some consistency in applying them. So I am torn here because there is enough, for instance, there's another house on Jameswell at the other end of the street. Same situation. I don't know what they asked for a variance. I had no, I wasn't here then. But they have solid fencing, you know, except on the street side, and then it's set back and it's four feet. That's, that's the zoning regulation.
Yep, no, I understand that perspective. I just, just for me personally, in a case where there's been no risk in terms of visibility or concern for traffic, we're, in applying the letter of the regulation to a corner lot, in this case where there's not an overriding safety concern, we're essentially limiting, in my interpretation, the use of the backyard of the property because we're, we're more than meeting the requirement from Dale Road in this case, which is, you know, the front requirement. You said, Charles, 55 feet, I believe, was where we are? Okay. And that, and Charles, from the application, that's where the fence will end, right? Is it that, even with the house there, as you face it from Dale Road?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite, my speaker is a little old, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. I just was clarifying your understanding because I don't have the, wasn't able to print the plot plan. So as we look at the house from Dale Road, the six-foot-high fence will end 55 feet from the road. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's actually in, it's actually behind the line of the house, obviously.
Okay. And just to clarify, we're going to be seven feet off of Jameswell. And obviously, it's a long fence, so we get into some area considerations. But if that were set back eight more feet, we would not need to have this discussion. Is that correct, Charles?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I don't think it's eight feet.
Well, okay, so we need to be 15 feet total from, from Jameswell to not have this discussion. Okay. All right. Paul, I wanted to give you a chance, if you wanted to weigh in. I know you, like I said, got cut out a little bit. Want to make sure you've got all the information that you feel you need.
Actually, from what I've looked at here on the, on the diagram, I'm kind of, you know, of the same mindset like Rita. I'm a bit torn in between because of the, you know, what the zoning rules are. And I understand that currently, right now, based on the application that was submitted, there isn't a safety concern. But, you know, I'm just, you know, again, torn in possibly having the next application that shows up for, that's on a corner lot, someone wanting this. And, you know, I know, even though we look at each application separately, this is, you know, it's, I'm torn on what my decision should be, but in that way, based on how the regulations are.
Okay.
Just, just like, Charles, is there, is there any recollection? You know, I see the, you know, just looking at the zoning regulations as a whole document, you know, comprehensive revisions, so they were done in 2004. In all of these amended, you know, like the last one was done in 2018. You know, is there, can you remember anything that was done in fencing in any of these? I mean, because this, this to me is similar to, you know, it's a little bit more complex than the, you know, than the AC units, but I think there's, there's grounds here for more comprehensive and more more modern zoning code regulations here.
I mean, the zoning regulations is clear as to what it specifies. You know, I really don't see a confusion with the zoning regulations.
It's not the confusion, it's just the, you know, trying to speak to, you know, when was the last time, you know, fencing regulations have been updated and actually looked at on a town level?
That's one thing. I mean, it could be revisited, it could be discussed to see if there could be, just like we do different parts of the regulation from time to time. It's not something that is done on a regular basis. The, since I've been with the town, the sign regulations have been revised. One or two areas have been button carved. But that's something that we can look to in the future to see if we need, whether there's a need to rewrite the regulations specifically for the fence and what would be, what would be required to change or to add to it. Maybe we need to clarify more on the part of the, the town engineer and the zoning officer being, being able to approve it. I mean, we would not be able to just approve it like that word of mouth. I mean, in a situation like this, I would rather know that it comes before the Board of Appeals rather than we try to make these decisions outside to say, okay, this is approved, or this is not approved, you know?
Okay. Rita, I think you wanted to weigh back in?
Yeah, a couple of things. I think really the town could do a better job at communicating certain things. I mean, you know, you can search online and find that guide to fences, but it'd be nice if it was a little bit more obvious for people, for homeowners. But it is there, and I am concerned that corner lots, there are a lot of corner lots in town. And I think we, it's, it's an issue of fairness sometimes, too, that if you go by the regulations and then you see your neighbor, they didn't go by the regulations, put up a fence, and now they can get a variance, and you put up your four-foot fence. It's, I think it's a difficult situation, but the, the regulations are pretty clear that it has to be a hardship for us to, to give a variance. And looking at the other ones we've, have come before us, I'm not sure this is a hardship compared to the hardship that we agonized over the last time we had a fence.
Let me say that in recent times, in my office, I've gotten several inquiries. I could spend all day replying to inquiries, right? Now, fences is one of the main ones. We, I received several inquiries for fences during any particular day. And I'm able to guide the homeowners, and they always, I could say, for the most part, the matter of fact, I think I can safely say they always understood, you know, the regulations as I related to them.
Yeah, I don't think it's your communication. I'm saying when you go on to the town website.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Looking for information, you know, it could be clearer.
And some of them would have read the regulations before, and then they called me and said, Charles, I went to the website, there were the regulations, but could you please clarify for me what this means or what that means, you know, so, yes.
Yeah, and I would just add, not to the communication piece, but just in terms of the, this case where we have a structure that's already up, in the same way that we, we can't take that into account in terms of just saying, well, all right, it's up, let's approve it. We also don't want to penalize. We just want to be able to hear, hear the, this application on its merits. And as I look at it, you know, we heard from the staff report and also from the engineer that indicated there were no challenges from a traffic or safety perspective. We heard three neighbors in the area, including one who is in such favor of it that agreed to fund half of the structure. So, and it's just, so it comes, it'll come down to interpretation. For me, in this kind of situation where there is no overriding safety concern or community opposition, it then does come down to feeling, you know, maybe it shouldn't, and I'm open to that, but it does certainly feel like a bit of a hardship to have to give up that much of a side yard for the purpose of privacy, yeah. Dan, you've been off mute. Did you want to weigh in?
I'll just weigh in. I just did all your comments, Dave. You know, it's, we heard from three people, three of the neighbors saying that they're in favor, and one of them actually paid for half of it. So I have nothing more to add than that.
Okay. And just a quick comment, Mr. Lucas, I see you've got your hand raised. Unfortunately, we can't take any additional testimony during our public meeting. So just wanted to let you know, I see the hand, but we'll have an opportunity after we take our vote if you want to weigh in on any additional matters. All right, Kevin, did you want to add anything?
No.
Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask if we have a motion?
I move to approve the application as submitted.
And we have a second. And we have a second.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the application as submitted. And we have five commissioners, all of whom will vote, so all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm gonna oppose this one.
Okay, so we had three affirmative and two. Negative votes, so that means that the variance is not passed. So Mister Bergoff, uh, thank you for joining us and, uh, if you wanna, as I said, stick around for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to. Otherwise, Charles, will you be following up with the applicant or?
Yes, I definitely will be following up with the applicant, cause, um, in this case, what it means is that, um, Mister Bergoff will have to. Cut that fence down to four feet. Or, um, take it out and, um, and replace it with a six-foot fence. Fifteen feet in from the street line.
Okay. Julie, can I ask you for, uh, just help with what is specifically next on our agenda?
The next thing on the agenda, Mister Chairman.
Yeah, what do you have, Charles?
Is the approval of, um, minutes of May twenty-seven, twenty-twenty, and then there's other business. Of which I have something to, um, bring to your attention regarding the last meeting and, um. Stipulations that were made. Number two, A, public comments and general matters of the zoning board. Number three, formalization officer for adjournment. So I have pretty much three. Before the adjournment, we have three other.
Okay. So on the minutes. I found one just very minor thing on page three.
I'd be right, I'd be right.
Okay. Well, we wait for Charles to come back. Did anybody else find any things that need to be adjusted in the minutes? Okay, I think we have all figured, and it's just a. Very minor spelling thing on page three. Not sure how far Charles had to go.
Okay.
All right, Charles, just, uh, the very minor thing I found was on page three, just past the halfway point. There's a paragraph that starts with Acting Chair Gustafson asked about stipulation number three. As you move to the second sentence, uh, Mister Buck explained the former, I believe it should be ox shed, right? It just says ox she right now, so that was the only thing I found. And, uh, I don't think we had any other corrections, so I, I will move that we approve. The May minutes as submitted with that one change.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Charles, what does that take us to? Sorry, I don't have the copy of the agenda in front of me. What's our next one?
Okay, um, so the next item on the agenda is. That was the approval of the minutes and the next item is other business. And then after that, there will be public comments and general matters of the zoning board. So. Under other business. I just would like to bring to the board's attention. Some correspondence that I have received from. The applicant of the last meeting. That, um, four eleven to four thirty-one. Hartford Avenue, you will recall, um, that there were five stipulations. And, um, the first one was, um, that the. Petition was approved and, um, the first stipulation was that, uh, the variance was granted. Contingent on the lot subdivision being approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. My last inquiry last week, um, I found out that the, the application has not yet been made to the commission. Second stipulation was that four thirty-one Hartford Avenue is to be used as an arts academy only. Number three, there shall be no off-site parking. For any renovations or reuse of the West Barn must conform to the requirements of the Historic District Commission. And the parking guidelines are set by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the fifth stipulation says that any additional transfer of the property. From the Arts Academy will nullify the variance and the property will remain as residential. And, and what this means here, um, is that, um. Any other use apart from a arts academy, it did not say specify the name of the arts academy. Because right now, we know that the name is the Weatherfield Arts Academy. And it didn't say if it changed to the Art for the Arts Academy. I think it said, once it changes from. Arts Academy, that will nullify the variance and it will remain as residential and this was, um, this. This stipulation was brought down from the original variance, which was granted in two thousand and five, which said that it had to remain. In, 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 uh, as an arts academy and you will very well recall that, um. The only reason that it came up before you is that, I mean, the, the zone has changed, it's still in the residential zone, the zone has not changed. The only reason why it came back is because of the proposed log split. Which will make the Arts Academy a principal structure as against, um, an accessory. Structure. So, uh, Mister Buck sent me, we have had conversations a couple of times and, um. On Friday, June nineteen, he sent me an email which read as follows, and I quote. "We have modified stipulation five. Hopefully to meet all requirements. Please see attachment. Note that we have said an arts academy rather than the Arts Academy." If Weatherfield Academy for the Arts fails or quits. We would still like to use the property for an arts academy, even if we manage it ourselves. So, um, I think, and I'd just like to share that with you, um, if I may.
So, Charles, they're proposing. A modification to that fifth point, is that what you're saying?
Yes, they're proposing a modification to that. To, to that. Fifth, uh, stipulation. But what, what they're saying is that, uh. If it fails or quits, they would like to still use the property as an arts academy, but nothing is preventing them from doing that.
Yeah, and, and so that one, um, I, I mean, that was one of, I think, the biggest pieces of feedback we had from. The neighbors in this case was that concern of what happens. You know, if the property, you know, if right now this split is approved and the owner of the property becomes the Weatherfield Arts Academy. What happens if they then turn around and sell the property to someone else? Uh, you know, we heard some testimony, I think, and people saying, you know, we don't want a grocery store to go in there, you know. Car lot or whatever that would be. So that was, uh, at least as I remember it, and anybody else feel free to weigh in. I think that was one of the things, big things we were trying to protect against with that fifth stipulation, which was just to say. If that point comes where the art academy is transferring the property, selling the property, doing something else, that. It, we wanted it to be clear that the zoning is residential. And, and so I don't think it, for what they're describing, right, the, the arts academy would have to go under, would have to sell the property back to. Mister Buck. In, in which case he would be free, and unless I'm misinterpreting, but he would be free to come back before the board to seek a variance to continue. With another, um, school or nonprofit or whatever he wanted to do there, but. That was, I mean, we heard quite a bit of testimony, that meeting ran fairly long, so I think we wanted to be. Provide some safeguard to. Folks in the neighborhood who were concerned about that next step. You know, there wasn't a lot of concern about this step, but it was really that next one. Uh, after the fact, so I don't know what, uh. Do you, are you, look, are you sharing something, Charles?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I'm trying to. The revised stipulation here. I'm trying to open it, taking a little while.
And, and I'm gonna confess, this is, um, one, this is something I have not come across, so if. Would we have to take this up at another meeting and? Revote on this revised stipulation if we're so inclined?
We, we can do that, but, um, for your information, Mister Chairman, I, I have on the screen stipulation number five. And this is the attachment that Mister Buck referred to, and this is what he would. Apparently, this is what he would like to see as the, as a stipulation number five.
So I'm, I'm curious for anyone else's opinion. As I see, as I read this, I don't see that it addresses. What I think we were trying to get to in that stipulation number five. My.
What was the wording of our stipulation number five again?
This is, this is the proposed.
Right, this is the proposed one, but.
From number five, because what number five says, and, um, if I could, um.
I mean, from the minutes, it says any additional transfer of the property away from the art academy nullifies the variance. And the zoning remains residential. I don't know if we changed that for what got presented to them, but that's what's in the minutes.
Right, and that's, that's, that's all that the board is interested in. I think, I think Mister Buck is trying to get the board involved. With, um, distribution of, of assets and some kind of, um. Funding, I think he wants the board to, to. To, um. To put in, in its, um, stipulation, how, cause if you see here what he said, all assets or money from the sale shall be distributed. For one or more exempt purposes as defined. I don't know if the board is interested in putting that kind of a. Word in, in, into the stipulation. I mean, that's, that's their prerogative in terms of their management and, um. Charter and the, you know, and the revenue code requires. All we are saying is that. It remain as, um, all the board is saying is that it remains as, um. As an arts academy, even if it's changed from the Weatherfield Arts Academy. We, the board, I don't think, and I don't know if the board is even. Concerned about, um, the assets or the money from the sale, the distribution of the assets. I, I, I don't know. Why he's trying to impose that on the board.
I mean, bottom, bottom line is if it, if it, if it shifts from being an arts academy, I, I don't think we care what it's called or who's running it.
Right, all the funds is distributed or dispersed or whatever.
It's an art academy or it's not, and if it's not, then, uh, I mean, it's not our purview, I don't, I mean, I. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's not our purview, what happens to the property afterwards, or who sells it, who gets it? Uh, whoever gets it needs to understand that it's gonna be a residential zone if it's sold and they're not running an art academy. I, I, I definitely don't think we should, we, we should reject this.
Yeah, I would think it's up to their bylaws to determine how assets are transferred. It shouldn't be a stipulation.
Yeah, that's my feeling as well. I, I, unless, it's very possible that there's, you know, a piece here that I'm not connecting the dots on. But this seems like it's, uh. Beyond what our effort was and also this, um. This seems to actually open up. A little bit on what we, because it references if it's transferred to another organization. So it does not maintain that specificity around the art academy that we had in our original one, so. And then if it's sold for residential use, then. The variance is somewhat moot at that point anyway.
We can't even change it at this point, could we, without a whole nother hearing? I mean.
Yeah, that was my question, how, how we would even go about doing that.
But, again, again, Mister Chairman, he has included, um, the board's stipulation, which says, and I quote. "Any use of the property other than as an arts academy or residence. Shall nullify the variance and require approval from the zoning board of appeals." But he wants to further, he wants the board to further take it upon itself. Add this section, this second, um, paragraph here that says, "If it is transferred to another organization. Are sold for residential use, the assets and money and sales shall be distributed for one or more exempt purposes." Yeah, that's something I think outside of the board's, um, purview and in my opinion.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. I was not even, I was so focused on the second sentence, Charles, I was missing that, uh, he had us covered in the first sentence, so I appreciate that. But it, yeah, and if it's sold for residential use, um. Yeah, I mean, this is, feels like we would want, uh, input from the town attorney to me if we were gonna even entertain this.
Right.
I don't know, I mean, do we even, I mean, I guess, uh, Charles, what's, I mean, I think Dave was asking, what's, what's the course of action here? I mean, can we, can we just say no? And, I mean, I think our stipulation as it was covered it and was pretty clear. Uh, to, to the, to the extent I think we were intending it to be. You know, I guess, what's, what's our response to this? How, how do we go about it?
You can make your response whichever way. I mean, let the chairman says, um, you could, um. Seek counsel, you know, seek, uh, legal opinion from counsel as to, oh, you know. If this is something that you can do or you would want to do, you know.
Well, I'd be, I, I mean, I guess that would be the thing that would seal it for me, Charles, if we could just say, because it feels like. They were adding to the stipulation in a way that is, uh, dictating a real estate transaction.
Right.
Uh, and that feels definitely beyond zoning appeals to me, but, um, if we could. I mean, I'd be open if you wanted to take this to the town attorney and get us an opinion as to whether we're. Correct on that. This, this doesn't feel to me like anything that's in our purview to add.
Yes, I, I think you'd, you'd be better off getting a legal opinion on this, Mister Chairman.
Okay, so can you seek that on our behalf?
Will do.
Thank you. All right, um. Anything else that you had, Charles?
We have an opening for public comments and general matters of the zoning board of appeals.
All right, I'm looking at the participant list. I don't see anybody but us remaining, but I'll do a quick call in case I'm not seeing anybody. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any matters? All right, uh, let it be noted, there were no. no pieces of input, which brings us to the selection of officers, correct?
Yes.
Which, again, I am challenged by having two of our permanent members not be present for that discussion. Michael and Elizabeth are still maintaining their membership, right? Neither one of them is resigning their positions. Charles, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just have Mike, well, I guess, yeah, Elizabeth was on the last meeting. Michael's missed a couple. Paul. Paul got knocked out. I mean, I'm torn on this one. I know that's something we want to get done, but also it just feels to be something that we should have all the permanent members involved in. So I guess I'm gonna move again that we table the officer discussion to next month's meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
A question. Do we meet in July? Do we, are we meeting in July or is it August that we skip?
We don't know yet. July meeting, I think it's the twenty seventh and the cutoff date for applications is the sixth of July. So on the seventh of July, I will be able to answer that question.
Okay, we don't skip July because of summer?
Oh.
Not typically.
No, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we have ever done that.
Okay.
It has happened organically before when we have no applications.
Okay. Got it.
All right, so I don't think we finished the, let's take our vote on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion passes. Charles, is that it for the agenda?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
I've
All right.
I have one real quick question. Charles, if we were gonna, let's say if we were gonna try to get some of these zoning, some of the zoning ordinances looked at or talked about, is that something we can bring up? How, what's the channel to to get something like that looked at? You know, the, the air condenser units, that type of stuff?
You could make suggestions. And then we could bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission and see. But in the past, efforts have been made to to change the the requirements for the air conditioning units. And just, just to reiterate, what was the situation with the air conditioning units? These, these units are seen as accessory structures. So accessory structures are only allowed in the rear yard. So if these, if these condensers are placed in the rear yard, then we have no issue. The issue comes in when they're placed in the, in the side yard. So because they are accessory structures and they're not allowed in the side yard, what the regulations try, what they tried to do, and this is not something that's written, and that's what I inherited. What they do is say, okay, if it's gonna be in the side yard, then it must be, it must become a part of the principal structure. Hence, you must provide the required side yard setback where there's be five feet, ten feet, or fifteen or twelve feet. However, it's kind of a tricky situation because there's a section in the regulations that says that an accessory structure can be in the front yard as long as it's about seventy feet from the front property line.
Okay.
So, you know, there are different, and I think that means it could be in the side yard as well as long as it, I'm not sure about the side yard, but I know it could be in the front yard if it's set up a certain distance. So we could discuss it and see if there's any way that we could change that.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead, Rita.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm with Kevin. I think some of these things have to be addressed. It makes it easier for the taxpayer and for, for us. The ACs are one, the fences are another. I mean, that section B definitely says solid fence. And section A is open fence. And everybody loves these white vinyl fences. So they're solid fences. I think we have to figure it out.
All right. Yeah, yeah.
I just have a question. Did everybody drive by that house on Jamesville and see it?
Yeah.
You saw, okay.
Yeah, I, I, again, yeah, just.
No, I'm just concerned about that front yard, that that's gonna become acceptable.
The front yard across from them?
The front yard, James, the house on Jamesville. Because that, I wouldn't want my neighbor to have a a side yard fence that came out that far into my front yard.
Okay.
And on a corner lot, that can happen in a lot of places.
I see.
And I, I just, it's that last fence when we had was
Oh, however.
For this, I mean, that was not a safety issue either, so.
The, however, that neighbor across the street seemed to, to not have a problem with it.
Oh, no, I, I agree.
Was he the one that put half of the money up?
Yeah.
No, that was next door. Not across the street, next door.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
I think.
No, the guy who put, the guy who put the money up is the one, he's the neighbor that the fence is riding up into the, like, his front yard.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So he's on Jamesville looking at the fence, right?
His
Yeah, I mean, he's looking.
His side yard abuts the applicant's backyard.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're looking at, looking at James Road, looking at his house, the applicant's yard.
I really don't see why he would be interested in putting up a half of the money, but that's just my.
Yeah, that was a new one. I have not heard that before.
Yeah. He doesn't like people looking into his yard.
Yeah. All right, well, once again, we've gone a little longer than what we typically do. I, I don't know if I can say that our meetings are typically thirty minutes or less anymore. So I appreciate everybody hanging in and appreciate all the discussion. As always, stay well, and we'll see you next month. Meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Everybody.
Take care.
You may not end the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.